Call of the meeting to order. Minutes. Oh, seated tonight is myself, David Rathman, Ben Philbrook, Lynn Conway, Fred Dykman, Garnet Young, also in attendance, our two alternates, Turk Shan and Peter Shemowitz. Minutes?
Approve the minutes as entered.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close and ayes have it. Administrative review. Keith?
Sure. Item 4D1, Connecticut General Statutes 8-24, review of West Broad Street School leased to St. Michael's School. What's before you here is what's called a 824 review, which is named after Connecticut General Statutes 8-24, which in a nutshell says that if a town takes a certain action, such as leasing a building, doing some sort of capital improvement, that activity needs to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a vote as to whether it's consistent or not consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So, it's not a typical approval, you know, as far as the other things you look at, like a development review. In this case, the Board of Selectmen have recommended that you opine on this, as to whether it's consistent with the P O C D. The Selectmen are considering leasing the former West Broad Street Elementary School to St. Michael's for a temporary three-year lease, with an additional two-year possible extension. This was recommended, at least in a temporary way, by our Facilities Committee, and their chairman, Paul Sarder, is here if there's any questions about that. But they recommended it as a way to basically have an activity in the school to keep for As far as what the plan of conservation and development says, there is a task in there that says determine a future plan for the West Broad Street School in Pawtucket. And there are a few other things that might be relevant, like encourage sensitive stewardship of historic resources, conduct a comprehensive analysis of all town-owned facilities to determine future needs. So the statute don't really, you know, demand more of you than that than to say if this is consistent or not consistent with the P O C D. It's not about the details of the lease and whether you think it's a fair amount or anything like that, it's just really that decision. And by the way, if you vote against it, if you say it's not in conformance with the P O C D, what it does, in theory, is require a two-thirds vote of the Board of Selectmen, which because they're such a small group, they are two-thirds vote anyway.
Do I have any discussion on this lease?
Question as to whether it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development to tie up this building for five years for, we're not supposed to have an opinion about this, for what is really a bargain lease.
We don't have to eat it.
Well, no, but we're responsible for all kinds of capital repairs. At $300 a month, you can't even buy a used car. So, I wonder if it's, if, how that fits as consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Well, you know, it's ultimately for the Board to decide. You know, I think that the Facilities Committee looked at it as a good way to basically maintain the building for the next few years, with the use that is basically the same use that was there. You know, they look at it as the, in their letter, the best option for the town to fulfill its immediate occupancy desires and reduce owner expenses in the short term. They do say that the town may choose to fully explore other uses for the school on a more long-term basis.
Any other questions?
Is there any legal obligation? I mean, you know, $300 a month is, I mean, I've been in for $300 a month. Is there any obligation to do this at a fair market value, or can we do it whatever we set it at?
We do it every day. Years ago, in Westlake, remember, when they closed Downstreet School, they sold, they closed two schools in the 50s, and they sold one to St. Peter's Church for a dollar, and they sold the other one to Methodist Church for a dollar. So.
I just, you know, I, since it is a business transaction, I didn't know whether we were having the brutality obligation to do it at a fair market value.
Well, this gives the town, if it doesn't work out, then they can have, they can figure what they're gonna do. But right now, we have some income.
I'm not criticizing.
Stop eating it.
I'm just wondering if there was any obligation.
Six empty, that works against P O C D.
Yeah.
So, I think if for any amount would be, I would more support it.
Do I have a motion on this application?
I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, item 4D2, proposed architectural modifications to approved site plan application, PZ 1839 SPA, J&amp;H Hospitality Mystic LLC, Greg Fettis, applicant for alterations to existing restaurant building, reconfiguration and regrading of parking lot, create an outdoor terrace and enhance landscaping, property located at 6 Coogan Boulevard, Mystic Assessor's Map 171 Block 2 Lot 1. And Mr. Fettis is here to present this to the Commission.
Good evening. My name's, good evening. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, an office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Also with me tonight is Matt Williams, is the Architect of Record, who will describe a couple of the changes that we've kind of made over, in the course of construction for various reasons. We were here, and also here is Michael Corso, who's the managing partner of Rio Solado, which is going to be the new restaurant located at the old Boathouse, the old Jams location, on the Holiday Inn Express, or Holiday Inn property at 8 Coogan Boulevard.
Excuse me, if I can just interrupt for a second. On my little summary of this in the report, I have the wrong heading up here, so I didn't want that to confuse anybody. I have a heading of a Harry Austin Drive address, so hopefully that didn't add any confusion.
Which we were here last month on Harry Austin Drive, maybe that was a bit of the confusion, but, so anyway, our, we're kind of closing in on sort of the end of our construction at this location, and we just, we were here before you about a month ago regarding the change of a retaining wall, and said we'd come back before you with, just to kind of make sure we didn't miss anything, or mislead, or any of our changes that we made during construction weren't known to you. We were before Architectural Review Board last night. There's a couple of, I wouldn't say big changes to the architecture, but they were very pleased that, one, we were there last night, and also, two, that they felt the changes we made were very positive. And I'll let Matt talk about those. Let me just go over the changes, which are summarized in the letter that I sent, and then Keith, in his review, had a couple of comments, which I'll also address. So, the first item is the minor modification to the sidewalk up to the front entrance. And there's another item, which is the second form of egress that came out of the lower level, which kind of necessitated moving the sidewalk and kind of straightening it out on this location here. So that's one of the minor changes. We made a minor modification in adding a ramp on this side of the handicap space, which allows you to access the entire sidewalk. Previously, we had just shown a ramp on one side. I mentioned already the second egress from the lower level, which will be coming up in this location, which is adjacent to the front entrance of the, of the main level of the restaurant. We also modified the seating arrangement on the first floor. Basically, as we started building it out, the interior designer just had some ideas with different forms of seating. So it's basically the same number of seating, it's just a different arrangement.
Basically, they're just different.
Ah, just the way things are situated.
Do you have any numbers?
The numbers didn't change, just the configuration of how the booths, you know.
It was a booth, and now it's a banquet.
Okay, not, numbers.
Yep.
No numbers.
So, and again, I'll have Matt talk about this, but it's the minor modification to the main entrance roof structure, which is located here where the main entrance is. As you come in, you kind of enter on the side, but it's, and the Architectural Review Board really liked that enhancement. We added some make-up air units on the back of the building, on the roof, that can't really be seen from Coogan Boulevard. A minor modification on the east elevation to the window arrangement here. Again, I'll have Matt talk about that in specifics. We also revised the railing, which is going to be now a laser-cut piece of steel that's going to reflect the Rio Solado logo. This is basically one of the panels, a blow-up of one of the panels, that'll sit underneath the rail between the posts there. We changed, previously, we had lattice down below it, now it's going to be a kind of batten, board and batten horizontal, which will have the ability to hang flower boxes.
The railing, I think you said was going to be wood, it's now going to be metal?
The rail, the top rail will be wood, and then the panel, instead of, the panels will be.
Mixed?
Yes.
When I read it in the staff report, it said it was going to be wood, metal, and now it's going to be wood. So it's going to be wood along the railing, and then the panels will be metal?
Yes.
Will they be all the same color, or?
They will all be painted black.
Why did you make that shape?
We wanted to, we wanted to kind of bring out the logo, and we thought it would be a little bit of a different look than.
It's just going to be solid black, it's not going to, like, in the middle, say, Rio, or anything like that?
Well, this is, this part is actually laser-cut out of the metal panel.
Okay.
So it'll allow some light through it. At night, the light will be, it'll be backlit, so it'll.
But the little circle in the middle?
There's a star in the very center, and then, this is basically the logo of Rio Solado, which is.
Right, I saw that. So is that going to be painted a different color, or is it just going to be laser-cut?
That's, that's going to be cut right through.
Okay.
Right through, so there's air on the other side, so there's nothing, yeah. So just the panel itself will be painted black.
And you couldn't make that the entire thing, the top rail as well? You couldn't make that metal?
I'm not sure that we could have. The wood rail, there's a wood, basically, framework that supports, that holds this all together, and then on top of that would be a wood rail, rough-cut wood rail to match, it'll be sanded down so you don't get splinters, but it would, it'll match the rest of the, and again, Matt, I'll let him go into detail, a little more detail, if you have any more questions.
Thank you.
And then just the other, the last item, if you look on the front elevation, we did like a faux brick, which is on this elevation, that's inset underneath the, underneath the overhang of the porch. I'll hand it over to, oh, let me just do, to, let me just address Keith's five comments, sorry, he had some questions. We didn't change the, this number one was that no additional seats were added. We had mislabeled some of the elevations, which we fixed, east and west. And we did, I talked about the lattice change down in the bottom, we added that, and actually have revised drawings for you. Matt has photos of the place under construction now, which might be helpful. And then we also added that faux brick, which you're probably looking for and you can't find. So, I'm going to hand these out while I hand the microphone over to Matt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Matt Williams, I'm an architect, I have a small practice in Madison, 897 Boston Post Road. I just stepped up because I thought I might be able to help explain some of the adjustments visually, a little bit more clearly than Greg was doing. So, I'm going to hand you a photograph here, just to get right to the last question about the wood railing that can go around, if you want to send it around this way. When you arrive at this building, it sits much higher than where you are, so what you really see is the ceiling, or the open space underneath the roof of this deck. So what we did was we sort of made that the architectural interest with a warmth of wood, natural wood. So the natural wood railing kind of ties that together. The, you know, almost solid, but, you know, carved-out metal panel will serve also to kind of keep cool breezes off people in the sort of, you know, bridge seasons, and I think also make people feel a little more comfortable with the parking lots sort of right below you. So those are really the reasons behind that. As far as the architectural changes, there are two, I think. One is the railing, and the other is the additional, this upper part of this roof structure. When we, you know, revisited this after the, you know, we went through all the code requirements and everything else, the owner felt that this was just kind of a long, monotonous eve. Also, you know, there really wasn't much attention, you know, paid to the entrance at all. I think, when you come to this site, it's a little bit disorienting, because you're uphill, downhill, and I really felt that you wouldn't really know exactly how to get in this building, especially with the taqueria with the lower level. So, we did that as, for a place to put the primary sign, and also, I think it just gives it, you know, a better architectural feature, and as Greg pointed out, the Architectural Review Board was pleased with that. So there's the railing, and then on the east side that Greg mentioned, there was a larger window in here, it was a little bit similar to this one down below, and because of the geometry of the existing building, nothing really lines up, nothing's centered, and we looked at many different ways to sort of try to improve that. With the large window over here, it called so much attention to itself that it really seemed like it was very out of place. So we just made the windows smaller, and got the sign right up under the ridge. And again, Architectural Review understood the challenges of, you know, the very, the three different axes we're trying to deal with there. So it's really, I guess, in my estimation, pretty minor. The windows, the style of the windows, the color of the windows, the frames being black were part of the original proposal. From what I understand, color wasn't really clear in the original proposal, at least that's what I've been told. But the owner, can you grab that board, Greg? I should have grabbed that. The idea of a white backdrop with rustic texture is the reason for the thin brick veneer and the wood. And we just think it gave it sort of a, more of a southwest feel that, you know, that really is appropriate for a Mexican restaurant. So, this is just sort of a iconic black and white contemporary farmhouse, and that's, and that's all we're doing color-wise, it's all it's really supposed to represent. It's a very common, popular look these days, so.
What exactly is faux brick?
It's a bad description for thin brick veneer. So it's not a full brick, it's not, it's not like, you know, a full brick veneer mortared.
But it is brick, or is it concrete?
It's not brick, no. It's actually, it's actually has a foam core, and it's sprayed with a semititious finish. So when you see it, when you, when you touch it, you really don't know the difference, especially in a painted form. It works as a painted form, it wouldn't work as a natural brick look.
The picture you showed us is stone, looks like stone, but you're saying brick, like red brick, or do you mean like stone in the picture that you're showing?
No, no, the stone, this is, this is not, not part of what I want you to focus on. In this photograph, it's just the black and white look, that's all. The stone is not, yeah, no. The brick, if you look closely, this is actually the brick texture right up here.
Oh.
And we ran it around the outside wall, and what it does is it also runs the other side of that wall in the interior. So it sort of ties the inside-outside together, which, you know.
Is it fire retardant?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
I noticed you talked a little bit about the sign, and how you moved it up, right under the eve. Now, on the, on the east elevation, there's no lighting, is that a correct representation?
As of right now, there isn't any.
There's lighting on the sign.
Yeah.
On the east, the taqueria.
Yeah, down on the lower, on the lower level, there's lighting there. I don't think there was ever lighting up in that, in that eve.
Okay.
If, if there was, it's my omission on this revision.
There's lighting there, but not, okay.
Yeah.
All right. How, how big is this sign?
It's been a while since I've looked at this. I'm going to guess it's about four to five feet wide, and about two and a half feet tall.
And then, on the north elevation, the sign is just lit by two lights above it, correct?
Yes.
The sign itself is not backlit, it's just the two lights above it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to just state again that I was at the ADRB meeting last night, and they did think this was a positive change over the initial approval.
Town engineer's okay with all these modifications?
The town engineer, no, he didn't comment on this. And the site plan elements are very small, like moving the sidewalk slightly.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't quite sure at last meeting.
Well, we look forward to opening soon and seeing y'all there.
Do you have a date?
We're hoping for the week after Thanksgiving.
Oh, good. That's two weeks.
Quiet opening, okay.
Call a public hearing to order?
Pursuant to the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut, Revision 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Middle School, formerly known as Mystic Middle School, 204 Mistuxit Ave., Mystic, Connecticut, on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, well, slightly after, on the following applications. PZ 1926, SUP, Demoto Investments LLC, My Dog's Place LLC, Special Use Permit Application for the Operation of a Dog Daycare and Training Center, property located at 50 Tagwong Spur Road, Stonington, Assessor's Map 84, Block 1, Lot 3, Zone LI-130.
Seated tonight in this application are five regular members. The way the public hearings work, we have the applicant speak first, then all those in favor, then anyone opposed, and then any general comments. If you'd like to speak, there's a signup board over on the table. We welcome the applicant.
I didn't bring, I didn't bring the easel with me, anyways. So, hi, thank you. I'm Marjorie Lineawber, I'm the owner of My Dog's Place LLC, I'm, we're the applicant. So we're proposing to open at 50 Tagwong Spur Road, in the same manner that we currently do business at 2 Avery Street in Mystic, and 7 Capital Drive in Eastlime. So My Dog's Place has been in the town of Stonington since the late 90s, 1996. I've been owner since 2001, and so we do dog daycare, where the dogs come in, spend the day with us. They are put into groups of like-sized dogs, size dogs, play-style dogs, supervised by our staff throughout the day, and they all go home by 6:00 PM. So that's, that's our daycare. The way that our daycare currently works is there's one staff member with a group of typically about 15 dogs per group. We're proposing an outside fenced area out the, off the backside of the building, 50 Tagwong Spur, so that the dogs would also have an outside play yard, as well as the indoor space. And like I said, all the dogs go home by 6:00 PM. We do not do overnight boarding, we never have, and we will not, as a business. We do not do grooming, so our business is the daycare and training. And then on the evening, in the evenings and on the weekends, we hold training classes. We're an all-positive training center, so we have instructors, including myself, our general manager, and several instructors that teach group classes, where owners come with their dogs, participate in class, typically about an hour class sessions, and then go home. So, that's kind of the overview of what we do. Thank you all received. Little bit more detailed.
Could you just tell me your hours of operation again, both on, so I said, all dogs go home at 6 during the week?
Yep.
What time do you open?
We open at 6:30 in the morning.
So 6:30 to 6 during the week?
So 6 for daycare. Yep, we're open Monday through Friday for daycare.
Okay.
No weekend daycare. And then for classes, we typically have a 6:00 PM class, goes to 6 to 7, and then a 7:15 to 8:15 class. So we're usually closing up and heading home by 8:30. The instructors would be heading home by 8:30 after classes. And on the weekends, we have some playgroups and some classes. Typically on the weekends, we're open from 9 to typically 6 or 7 for classes on Saturday, and then some daytime classes on Sunday. Again, similar hours.
Okay. And then how many, how many dogs, you said groups of 15?
Correct.
How many groups?
So we would have, the building plan here shows the, the groups that we would have, the playrooms. So this would be split into two groups, so this would be 15, 15, so 30 dogs, and then there's two other smaller rooms that could have 15, and then our puppy daycare room could have up to 10 puppies. So maximum 70 dogs. That would be at the max.
Does that occupy the whole building?
Yes.
How large is the fenced-in area?
The building itself is 200 feet long by 40 feet wide, and we would occupy the entire building, so 8,000 square feet. And the proposed outside fenced yard would go off the back of the building, out 30 feet, and 180 feet off the back, not the entire length. So each, each group of dogs would have a section outside, about 30 feet by 40 feet.
Oh, you're saying there would be one in the bottom?
Correct, yep, yep. So, and that's pavement now, yep, and our proposal would be to put. Correct. Yep, yep. So, and that's pavement now, yep. And our proposal would be to put horse stall matting, which is what we currently have at our daycare in Mystic, is three-quarter-inch horse stall matting over the pavement, so that they have a comfortable, comfortable surface to play on.
So is that all?
Yeah. So what we do for cleanup is, you know, when poop happens, we pick it up immediately. There's no, no hanging around. So we pick that up immediately when it happens and clean up with disinfectant. And when pee happens, immediately mopped up, and then a disinfectant each day. Yep, yep.
Would there be lighting outside?
Yes, yep. The rear of the building has lighting currently off the back of the building, and currently lighting out of the front of the building, which is where the parking is. Yep.
Do you plan to put awning over the outside patio?
Yeah, we would put up in, from spring to fall, we would put up the big shade cloths. Yep, like you would put over like an outside patio at home. We'd...
Or reach fall?
Yeah. We'd, we'd take it down during the winter because of snow load and things like that, but during the spring to fall, we would put up the, the shade cloths, like you would put over an outside deck, you know, at home. Yep.
That doesn't interfere with any required parking area or any traffic lanes or anything that are...
Correct, correct. All the parking is in the front of the building, and I believe it has 23 slots out in the front of the building. The back is where the garage doors are, and that's currently unstriped and not considered part of the parking. Right.
Up against the highway?
Yes, up against the highway. Yep. Just the exit, just the exit ramp. Yep, yep. And there's a, if you've driven by there, you see this big, you know, soil burn there that kind of, you can see the top of the building, but there's a burn that kind of, you know, is a barrier between the, the end of the road and, and the exit ramp.
Is the greatest step down out of the garage doors now?
Nope. It's, it's at, at grade.
Flush with the finished floor inside?
Correct, yep. Which is another reason that we really like the, the property, because it's all at grade. So it's easy access for, you know, any handicap clients, for owners walking in and out with their dogs, and for the staff. It's all at, at grade. Because it's meant, the, the buildings were, each, they have the garage doors, so they were also built so that people could, you know, have a workman's van or something like that and actually pull into those spaces. Yep, yep, yep. Many of the other buildings...
Is that level flush?
Correct. Yep, yep. Many of the other buildings there, they are, you know, electrical contractors or, you know, clean pro contractors that they pull in and out of their buildings. So, yep.
What, what's the signage?
Signage? We currently would just put a sign on the front of the building. So we do have in our lease with the landlord that they would allow us to put a sign at the end of Tagwong Spur Road, but I haven't approached that with the town yet. As far as putting a sign at the end of Tagwong Spur Road facing Tagwong Road, haven't approached that with the town yet, but...
Would that be considered a separate permit, Keith, that would have to come before us, or...
It would be a separate permit that would be approved administratively, but it wouldn't have to come back to the board. And one of the things we don't know is, our regs basically say you can have one detached sign per lot. So, you know, it's a big lot with a lot of businesses, so I don't know if there's already a sign there or not.
Any other questions at this time?
Yes. Do you, will you do any dog walking outside of the building?
For dog walking, the, sometimes with our puppies and our puppy daycare, we do leash walk those guys so that they get the reinforcement of house training. So puppies are the only ones that we currently leash, that the staff leash walk outside the building. Other than that, just owners coming and going.
Okay. On a positive note, I worked for three years out of that industrial space, and I would take my lunch break and walk around that loop and back.
Yes.
So I can't imagine a better thing than to have some puppies wandering around.
Yes, exactly. Wouldn't it be great? Yes.
My name is Tina Bonanno. I'm from Westerly, Rhode Island. I've been a client at My Dog's Place for the last 14 years. Two dogs. Yeah, about 14 years. So I've been both the Mystic location and the East Lime location, and moving recently to the East Lime, the, the extra space we would have for parking, for allowing the dogs to have the extra bigger space and having the daily outdoor space would be a huge benefit for what this, this organization actually gives us as clients to begin with, between the daycare and the training and just the overall, everyone understanding how their dog operates and behaves and, and how to, you know, how to make them a good part of society. So I think this location, getting out of the Mystic location would be, would be huge for us.
Thank you. Jonathan Dunkley?
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Dunkley. I'm a neighbor. I'm a neighbor on 296 Tagwong Road in the light industrial zone, and I am excited to have My Dog's Place as a neighbor. I think it's a great application for this, in this space. Highway interchanges, like dropping off kids in Mystic, kind of get on, get off the highway, same thing with dogs. I can tell you that the location in Mystic is a hazard, and they've outgrown it, and they're outnumbered, and getting in and out of there is, could take an hour to take a left turn, usually have to turn with traffic and loop around. I'm sure you're familiar with the location, behind Sea Swirl. So I'm excited to be here tonight to hear your approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Any general comments? Keith?
Yeah, just wanted to point out that a few months ago, Ms. Line Weber successfully petitioned the commission to add this use of dog daycare and training facility in the town's three industrial zones. That regulation had about eight different criteria that would have to be met, and this application, it does meet all of those. Since she came up with the application, I guess that was, that was easy. It meets the parking requirements that came along with that new regulation, which was one space for every 400 square feet of the building. This also was reviewed by the police commission, and they didn't find any public safety comment, public safety concerns or anything like that. This does request the typical waivers associated with the special use permit of this kind. And as far as motions, that would, the waiver requests would just be wrapped into the special use permit application motion that's spelled out in the draft resolution there. And we don't have any recommended stipulations or anything like that to, to go along with it.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Post? Aye, it's him. Do I have a motion on this application?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Includes the waivers?
Include the waivers?
Exclusion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Aye, it's him. Application approved. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No meeting on the 3rd of December. Next meeting will be the 17th of December.